Good evening. It's about five minutes after seven, actually, on Monday, July 12th. Tonight, Athens City Council will be meeting, first of all, in a special session to read several ordinances and a resolution for second reading. And then we will, as soon as that's done, we will move directly into committee meetings, where we have just two committees on the schedule at this time, Planning and Development and Transportation. So, we have a forum here tonight, seven council members. I'm sorry, I'm acting as President, or President Delvias, but I'm just temporary, and I will be also acting as a council member. We have, again, several ordinances for second reading. After I read them, I'll look up momentarily if there's something anybody needs to say, because I think several of them are going to require a little comment. Ordinance 7410, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens, Ohio, to execute an easement agreement with the state of Ohio for the bike pathway along Home Street and deterring an emergency. Member Fall?
Thank you, Mr. President, Acting President. This ordinance, I just want to reemphasize that the ordinance is with the state of Ohio for the bike path connection that goes from Home Street by the library out to the bike path. And it is a 25-year easement. Our city easements with right-of-way and such are 10 years, but this is a 25-year easement with the state of Ohio.
Okay. And that's the existing bike path, correct?
Yes, this is the existing bike path that's next to the library.
We had some questions about that last week. Okay, thank you. Ordinance 7510, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Ordinance 7710, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07 Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions. Member Dawson, anything? Okay. And then we have a resolution for second reading. Resolution 0810, a resolution consenting to the state's participation in the Athens County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. No comments? We will move on to Planning and Development Committee. And Butler?
Thank you, Member Sands, President Sands. Not sure which title tonight, but thank you. Perhaps noting that it is the part of our agenda which is committee meeting and discussion, I didn't know if we wanted a brief respite for people who may not want to stick around for this part, or is that fair?
I don't know if they're here for it.
If there are some people here whose business has been resolved and you'd like to take this moment to leave, you may, or you can stay for a very interesting discussion. A wise woman. Okay. Member Butler?
I thought I'd offer that courtesy, because it may be a little bit, it may be here for a while. And again, this is an issue which I'm pleased and excited to address. Having said that, we will pause for departures here. All right, super, thank you. Well, I want to say briefly to members of the audience, I appreciate your attendance and participation tonight. It's nice to see a lot of friendly faces out there, and I share that as well, because we have cameras on us. So for those of you in TV land, we do have a number of people here in the audience, which again is exciting to see people involved in their local legislative process. Tonight, I want to do a few things. First of all, I want to acknowledge that my point is to propose legislation to permit or allow ownership within the city limits of Athens, a small number of chickens per So what I'll do here briefly is outline what my logic is supporting this. And first of all, we have a little background in history, then I'll acknowledge my logic or supporting ideas, and then some specifics about this particular ordinance which I'm going to recommend. So with a little background and data, one of the things that happened as an aspect of our town hall meetings is that we have a renewal in city engagement and civic involvement in our legislation and policies. Specifically, we had a big discussion and addressed legislation about front yard gardening, which I supported, and I believe Member Fall was the official, was the official name on that legislation. And in that discussion, when we permitted front yard gardening, which again was an argument and discussion that came out of the town hall meetings over the winter, the definition of caged birds kind of entered the realm. And I think that during that discussion of domestic animals and caged birds, it was a little ambiguous and perhaps a little confusing, because I think that then gave people in their minds permission to pursue people who had an interest in urban chickens, that gave them an opportunity to pursue that, and thinking that they were legit and within the law. Now, if we look also at the current code book, which is a pretty weighty substantial object in its own, and has a lot of years of input, and some of it seems to be dated, and some of it seems to be haphazard in spots, and it's something that the planner has acknowledged and other people involved in the city know that it could withstand or benefit from a little tweaking. So if we turn to page 2314, and we're looking at permitted accessory use, and this is in the residential zone, R1 zone, acknowledging some of the principal permitted uses, and then specifically this accessory use. And I'll briefly read this specifics here. "Accesory uses: Buildings or other structures customarily incidental to any aforesaid permitted or conditionally permitted uses may be established, erected, or constructed, provided that such accessory uses shall not involve the conduct of any business, trade, or industry, or any private way or walk giving access to such activity, or any sign other than authorized herein, and not including," and here's the, there's the rub, "not including the board of animals or the keeping of fowl or farm animals except in a building at least 100 feet distant from every lot line." And then, interestingly enough, following that, it says accessory uses may include the following summer houses and servants quarters. I don't know who has servants quarters, but not too many, I believe. So, you know, there's some ambiguity in language here, and perhaps even some outdated definitions and information. And I think my perception is, in having a candid conversation with John Patsky, our current co-director, that this definition of accessory buildings is probably a throwback or a reference to the old-fashioned chicken coops or hen houses, that were buildings that were substantial in size, that probably now we would consider a garage, or an outbuilding, or even a shed, that were big enough for a person to walk into, and probably housed or was the home of anywhere from 10 to maybe 20 or 30 chickens. My perception of now what's happening, or people's interest, is that keeping a much smaller number of hens in our possession would not necessitate such a large structure, and perhaps would then include the use of a small chicken tractor, or building not much larger than a doghouse, that you could move around the yard. So here's, again, this is some of the history and background that kind of led to this point. My logic supporting the change and transformation of the language has many points. First, I'll start off with food security. There's been a trend in our society to empower and acknowledge that the food movement for food security is real and relevant, and for a lot of different reasons. I think that when we have an educated population of people that are curious and interested in knowing that their food comes from a certain source, and where that source is, you're empowered to do so on your own, which leads me to an interesting, this was a nice piece of legislation, or not, I'm sorry, not legislation, but rather this was a nice piece of research I found on the internet by a woman by the name of Katie LeBeidi, who is at the University of New Mexico. She printed this in 2008, and she goes into some of the best practices, because that was one of the suggestions that the planner made, was that I do a little research looking at best practices in this field, to see what's out there. And she has an extensive research here on 25 cities throughout the United States, including LA, Key West, Madison, Albuquerque, Portland, Oregon, Seattle, San Antonio, San Diego, Austin, Memphis, Charlotte, all these towns have it on their books, and support and champion chicken legislation, Missoula, Montana. And so within her study, she looks at best practices and addresses this idea of food security as well. And in her opening argument here, she acknowledges that the food movement itself has become very popular, which has sparked a new interest for many in backyard food production. Since chickens are one of the smaller protein producers, they fit well into a backyard food production model. She then goes on to acknowledge that another support for this argument is the rising energy and transportation costs. And you think about where we were two years ago, and how much it costs for a gallon of gas. So she then says that that transportation costs have caused concern over increases in food costs, and backyard eggs offer a cheaper solution, as they do not have to travel as far to go to reach the plate. I just noticed Leslie Schaller walking in, and, you know, we also hear about the, was it the 30 or 40 yard, or 30 or 40 mile circle of food, and, you know, knowing that we're getting our food from within a certain distance, keeping our, treading on the earth lightly. And lastly, she mentions in her argument two here, that many citizens are becoming increasingly concerned about food safety. And we think about meat recalls and other animal industry issues in the news, backyard chickens seem to offer a much safer solution. You know, it wasn't that long ago that we were looking at food coming in from China, whether it was dog food or other, you know, other foods that were tainted or were problematic and had to be recalled or sent back. And even within our own country, we have some challenges with food recall. So if you're doing it yourself, then you know where it's coming from, and you know what to expect. I also think it kind of goes along with this idea of sustainability and resiliency in food safety and food security. To me, that's all part of the same argument, the same discussion that we're looking at here. I do also, in this part of my discussion, have a, from CFI, from Rhonda Clark, a general support of this idea or initiative. I'll read her first two paragraphs in this. She has not officially run this by her board of directors, but I think it'd be fair for me to at least offer this insight or her initial gut reaction to this legislation we're looking at. Community food initiatives is in support of creating Athens City Code that helps residents legally have chickens within the city limits. CFI's mission is to create food security on both individual and community levels, and having conscious chicken owners would definitely help achieve this. In addition to this, we have received several calls and emails from local residents asking CFI to help with this endeavor. Health and safety issues are important issues to take into consideration as we proceed. The municipalities in the United States have created code that allows for chickens in their cities, and with much research and forethought, CFI feels that we can come to compromise that allows a limited number of chickens to reside at private residence, while also paying close attention to the city code details, to ensure that safety and health issues are accounted for. And she also goes on to acknowledge that they would be willing to assist and aid in the education process and informative aspects that would be necessary as we move You know, another issue, I think, supporting the idea of moving forward with legislation that I believe is also educational. A number of parents are beginning to homeschool their children, and I think this is a great opportunity for a parent that's homeschooling to acknowledge and work directly hands-on with the idea of where our food comes from, and the responsibilities associated with that, and raising their own chickens. We think about some of the clubs and organizations that exist within our schools, such as 4H, Future Farmers of America, and other related school clubs. Even within our own city limits, we have the county fairgrounds, and anyone who's enjoyed the county fair has noticed that there's a lot of different activities going on, and it's exciting to see young children and the youth of America actively engaged and enthralled with that process. So again, these are some of the ideas that have been bouncing around in my head for a number of nights, and I think support this idea and support this legislation. Sometimes when I bring up this discussion with people, I hear their fears or worries about noise, or whatnot. And in my perception, that there would be no more worse noise coming from a chicken, and it would be from barking dogs, or from, for those of you that are ornithologists, you know, from, you know, the chirping birds in the morning of sunrise, so. I was just woken up this morning by chirping birds at this, I didn't want to be woken up, I wanted to still be sleeping, but I heard them nonetheless. And then we also know cicadas can be relatively loud as well, but we don't do anything to legislate before they're knocked a cicada, bother some activity that may, that they offer. You know, I, just a second ago, I acknowledged some of the towns and communities that support legislation on chickens, and it really does seem to be from coast to coast within our country. Ann Arbor, Michigan, just up north, or if you're an Ohio State fan, you wouldn't say it quite Ann Arbor, you would say that town up north. So the town up north in Michigan happens to have legislation that they just passed a year or two ago, which, which supports chickens. Burlington, Vermont, St. Louis, Missouri, Columbia, Columbia, Missouri just passed legislation this year in 2010. Another college town, Missoula, Montana. And then I also named up the big ones like New York, New York, LA, Seattle, Baltimore, Austin, Texas. These are all, I presume, fairly forward-thinking towns, and I think I would like to include Athens in that category when it comes to forward-thinking. In conversations that I've had with other officials from out of state, I found it pretty insightful. I had a really lengthy conversation with Mr. William Ward, who's the co-director of Burlington, Vermont. He was very candid and very open and very honest, and I appreciated his time. He's a former police lieutenant, so he knows enforcement. Burlington, for a little background for those of you present and out there in TV land, is 38,000, and when you look at the larger metro area, it's about 200,000. It has a large airport and three universities, it's a decent-sized town with a lot going on. His quote essentially, when I asked him about any worries or fears about chickens and enforcement, he says, "It's not a problem," essentially, quote unquote, "not a huge problem with enforcement, comma, no problem." He sends, he also acknowledged that generally, he's witnessed that the trend of the owners of chickens seem to be very responsible people. In my conversation with Officer Mike Sherba in Ann Arbor, they don't have a code department, so I got to run around trying to figure out who to talk to in Ann Arbor. Officer Sherba said that in the year or two that it's been on the books in Ann Arbor, he's only had one or two complaints. And again, that's a town of 114,000 with 340,000 in the larger metro area. In conversations with our local officials, I've had a number of conversations with co-director John Patsky, and then also really insightful conversation with Brian Zulik, who's been with the code department for a number of years, 11, 11-year veteran in the code department. He offered a lot of valuable input on this particular issue, and I appreciated his time, because I know the code department is busy, and I know that they've been under a lot of scrutiny recently in the past couple of years, and the mayor ran on some of these issues as well. But Mr. Zulik offered insight on this, and again, I think he, his take on it was that it was very doable. Similarly, the city planner here in Athens was encouraging me to look at best practices and made some suggestions, and he seems, my take on it in our conversations, that he seemed to express interest in moving forward with this kind of forward-thinking idea on So, thank you for your patience so far in getting to the crux of what I'm proposing, so thank you. Maybe we should take the seventh inning stretch and do the Chicken Dance? You've been to a wedding, you know the song, I sing along, right? So, again, thank you for your patience here. So what I'm proposing that we move forward with is to limit the number of hens per home to four. No roosters, because that obviously presents a noise issue and related problems. So one, limit the hens to four, four per home. Number two, no roosters. Number three, a registration process with the city. And I would argue to keep this registration relatively low, perhaps like $10, because I don't want us to ostracize people in the community, perhaps, that are either low-income or maybe not capable to shell out a lot of money for a registration fee. So I would argue that we should have a one-time-only registration fee of a minimum amount of money. And through that registration process, we could then offer a handout and/or information to people who are interested in moving forward with chickens and ownership. And that handout would be something that would be educational, and would detail the responsibilities of ownership, and the care necessary to handling, and proper ownership issues. And that was input that I received from one of my colleagues here on council, and I think that's very valuable. And again, this is where CFI could be a partnership in working with us on this issue. I would also argue that we should strike out the old setback of 100 feet, and change that, because that seems to be a trend in, against some of the best practices in these other communities, in which I would look at a 10-foot setback from the property line and/or house, whichever seems to be closest to that particular line. I also feel it's probably valuable to restrict the chickens from the front yards, so a restriction on front yard chickens. Number seven would be not for commercial use, or prohibit the, anything, any aspect of the chickens to commercial use. Number eight, I think is really important and valuable in this process, and again, this is input from one of my colleagues on council, and I really value it, and that's that within this ordinance, we should include the idea of the ordinance as council members and as a city within one year, so we can take on this new legislation, practice it, see what happens, see where we have any problems or shortcomings or issues, and then revisit within one year. If there's problems, we'll tweak it. And lastly, number nine, any chicken odors must not be perceptible at the property boundary. Now, I'm definitely open to other ideas or input regarding this legislation or these ideas surrounding it, and I value my colleague's input on council here. I thank everyone for their patience with me in getting through this.
Somehow I thought it was one of the points, you have nine points, I have rooster eight, so. Limit the chickens to four, no roosters, registration process, change the setback, no front yard. Let's see.
Non-commercial.
Non-commercial. Revisit ordinance, and chicken odor, so I'm missing one.
Right. And number four was the handout, essentially, that there would be an educational process, a handout, yeah. And/or perhaps even a class at CFI, or workshops that could be educational as well.
I just, I just, please, please.
Thank you, Matt. You're lucky I didn't make you do the Chicken Dance.
You'd have to get me to dance.
Member Fall?
I am in support of having chickens. I know that many people in my neighborhood and on the east side have approached me about having chickens. I'd like to point out that many of the communities that do have chickens, they're higher density than we are in many, Portland, Portland has very high-density neighborhoods, and they have had very little problem with chickens. I also want to point out that, as, I would support however it gets written, that right now, the code for permitted accessory uses, right now, this is not working for, say, a doghouse, or some, because that would be, as you read the code right now, that would be, you know, an accessory use within 100 feet distant from every lot line, if you have, you know, a substantial doghouse or a dog run. So, you know, there's problems with it. I would also suggest that, and this goes with just general nuisance, many of our nuisance laws would cover many of the things that may come up, and maybe we can make some kind of process where if people are concerned about chicken noise, or dog noise, or bird noise, or cat noise, that they can contact, probably it would be the police, the police departments, I think that's where it goes as a nuisance, and they can do a courtesy letter, because I think many people don't realize, and this is, you know, this is something that we can do at the same time, don't realize that their animals are making noise, because they may be at work all day. And so, this would be something that we can include, and it would be part of an education process.
Thank you, yeah. Pardon my absent-mindedness, I recall that suggestion, and thank you for putting it out there. Any other input from fellow council members? Member Isley?
Thank you, Member Butler. I'm supportive of the ordinance and the legislation in principle. I think there will be a lot of practical details for people to work out as they raise the chickens. Chicken manure in the summer smells, and, and you have to get rid of it, and when your chickens get old, they stop laying eggs, and that's after about a year. And then you'll have to make decisions, those who raise chickens will have to make decisions on whether or not they're going to slaughter the chickens, and do you want to be slaughtering chickens in your backyard, you know, with your neighbors? So, I think there's a lot of room for education. I'm sure that there are a lot of urban livestock-raising educational, you know, material available. So, you know, I think there's room for that, and that's, that kind of thing's going to be essential. And I guess probably, just as with the noise and music, probably being collaborative, collegial with your neighbors, and to let them know, I suppose, that people are considering, if the ordinance is passed, and that people do consider raising chickens, that is a courtesy, I think, even more so than a dog or a cat, it would be a courtesy to probably check with neighbors. That's not something we can legislate, but it's born just, I think, a civic-mindedness and a sense of neighborhood, getting along together. So those are my concerns, but I think they probably can be, you know, addressed with, you know, a lot of educational material. I think people will have decisions to make, are they going to let them be free-range in the yard, and then they're going to be subject to predators at night? Are they going to be housing them, and are people going to be willing to do, put up chicken coops or sheds? Are you going to bring in straw? You know, how often are you going to get the manure out of there? So there's just, you know, there are a lot of things that you don't think about in the beginning that take into consideration. But I thank you for all the background work you've done on this.
You're welcome. And you bring up some interesting points, too, about predators, knowing that we live in Ohio, we don't necessarily have some of the predators that other states in the Union experience. In Montana, for instance, their legislation is more restrictive on those aspects, because they acknowledge that there are serious predators out there in the Wild West.
I'm out on the edge of the woods, so we have, we have hawks, owls, we have raccoons that are out in my yard every night, and I'm in the city property, or in the city limits. Many others, I think, probably, too, that face up to the woods, so that's kind of thing that, you know, especially when chickens are small, you have to have them in heated space, be able to feed them and keep them warm, and so you're going to have to have a heated spot. It can be as simple as a refrigerator, kitchen box, a refrigerator box with a light in it, but you've got to be careful, and then there's a danger of fire, so, you know, just a lot of things to learn.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the legislation talks about predator-proof food containers, some other legislation addresses how often you need to change the manure area. You can get as detailed and as nitty-gritty as you want, or as loose, or as free as you want. Seattle, Washington has a 10-foot, I was looking at this one, one study I was sharing with you earlier about best practices, and the Seattle/Washington property line restriction is 10 feet from the property line. Some other towns, it's a little bit longer, 20 feet in LA, 25 feet in Arkansas. In Key West, there's no restriction, property line limitations. Similarly, interestingly enough, New York, New York, there was nothing about property line restrictions. Albuquerque, New Mexico, they really jump up the number of birds that are permitted at 15. And again, some of this is cultural, where people live and their habits and routines within those subcultures of America. Member Bam, sorry, did you have your hand up as well?
No, I was going to say that if people are concerned about what is being proposed, you might put your website up there, because the chicken tractor was something that was a new concept for me. I know you kept talking about it, so I looked it up, and it looked like it could work. I mean, it takes care of the problems, some of the problems Chris was talking about. And so I would encourage those people who are dubious to take a look at the sources that you've provided. We'll have some time between now and final reading, if you choose to put it up, so, I mean, because it's not going to be the same as it was when you were a child.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
I just have a question. You mentioned that you had spoken with someone, I can't remember from what city it was, and he said there had been few complaints.
I spoke with the director of Burlington, Vermont, who was the former police lieutenant, and he said that, I asked him about, what do they do when someone is breaking the ordinance in Burlington, because they're allowed to have four chickens, and don't have a registration process or anything like that. So, let's say someone had six or seven, he says the code department goes by and gives them a warning, and gives them a week or two to take care of the extra chickens that are in excess of the four that are permissible. And then, if that's not the case, if they still have them, then they have to address that with either fines or violations. But then, in Ann Arbor, Michigan, a town up north, the complaints, the officer I spoke with there, because they don't have the code department, so the police department handles a lot of the complaints, he did not specify what the complaints were, but in fact, he really had to kind of calm off guard with the discussion, and he had difficulty really jogging his mind about the complaints as to what they were. He said one, maybe two.
Did you say New York, New York?
Yes, I'm moving. Right, yeah. There's a lot of larger urban communities have been, have had it on the books for years, and then it's been a more recent trend, I think, for some of the college towns to begin to experience and look at this.
Interesting.
Thank you. Member Gadsden.
Thank you for your thoughtful research and preparation on this issue.
You're welcome.
It's been a little bit, not yet contentious, but possibly could be that way, and I appreciate you addressing all the concerns that you could possibly imagine.
You're welcome.
I think most of the problems that I could see that would potentially occur from chickens, I think, are addressed by either what you're proposing or existing city ordinances, in terms of whether it's unsanitary or creating some sort of smell that's offensive to neighbors, and I think, I think those types of issues could be pretty readily addressed. I'm not quite sure that I agree registration process would be necessary or that helpful. I'm wondering if it might just be more of a burden than a benefit in some ways.
Yeah, and good points, if I may interject. In some of the discussion on the internet in this paper, Best Practices, the acknowledgement of a registration fee, on some levels, helps offset perhaps the challenges that the code department may face with enforcement and handling of data, and so that's one argument for. Some of the arguments against would be, as I mentioned, for people of low economic backgrounds, it can be burdensome. And then also, if you're trying to save a buck by raising your own chickens through that process of the egg production, if you're paying a $50 or $90 or $100 fee, then it, what's the point? I mean, as far as financially.
That's a lot of eggs.
Right, right, that's a lot of eggs. Right, that you could buy at the farmer's market at Kroger. So, that's some of the discussion about, now, another discussion or idea in support of the registration process is it does give the city an opportunity to kind of see what's out there, and see if there's trends or patterns of people abusing the law or the ordinance, and as well as, it forces them to come in to get some of the educational information. I would probably also acknowledge that maybe we would want to consider a 90-day grace period for people who might already be in possession of chickens, that they would have time to address that, to come register. And that was something that talked about in Missoula, Montana, that there were people that were in possession of chickens prior to it.
Chicken industry?
That's right. Exactly. Any other thoughts, executive branch or?
I just finish with a follow-up thought.
For sure.
In terms of sustainable agriculture, this is a very, I think, a very natural follow-up to us allowing garden on people's properties, and so I think it's very much in following of that.
Thank you. And rebuttal to that as well, too, I think there was interest from the community to do so, and we weren't quite sure if it was going to get tackled with the garden issue, or whether or not we address it at a later date, and I guess now is the later date. Thank you. Member Sands.
Everybody seems to be okay. I am concerned on a couple issues. I think enforcement is going to require someone other than the code office. We've all heard through the code office that they're overwhelmed as it is, but we don't have an animal control officer currently working in the city. We had some discussions about that back in 2007 and 2008, when the county officer, the animal control officer, quit patrolling within the city. And I think that's a logical place for some control over animals such as chickens would come about. And I, if this were to go ahead, I would argue for some kind of legislation for structures. The chickens that I observe on Morris Avenue almost daily are living in a very small space, which I think is pretty restrictive. So, I think that some of the cages are not very humane. And also, we do have eggs within five miles of the city. I know, on an almost daily basis, I'm driving out toward Elm Golf Course, free-range brown eggs, $2 a dozen, so it's hard to make it more economical than that.
Thank you for your input, Member Sands. I don't have, I was looking through some of the data here to see if I had the, and there might be some numbers in the audience, when they have the opportunity to speak, that have the details memorized or in front of them, but there is a little ratio of amount of space needed for chicken in some of the, in the movable tractors, and it's, I don't have that number on me, but it's less than you think that would be necessary.
Oh, I see.
That's considered humane and within the realm of best practice. So, my apologies for not offering that data.
Okay.
Mayor, or?
Go ahead. You're still, you can come in.
Well, in my position, of course, I'm used to hearing the negative, and I can tell you that the majority of calls that we've been receiving are against the housing of chickens within the city. What seemed primarily to have been occurring in one particular neighborhood, shall I mention the Wild West side, has now indeed migrated to the east side of the town, and the calls we've been receiving are, you know, against that. I must point out, and I think, I can't speak for the planner, but I think what he talks about, look at best practices, look at other things. We have, the mayor printed out chicken laws from the CityChicken.com. The majority of these are greater than a 10-foot setback. Most of them are, you know, 40, 50, 75, and a number of these require neighbor notification kind of, you know, and meaning that the surrounding neighbors, and I don't know how you define that, not different than what we do when we have to, you know, when they go, before the BCA, they have to petition the adjoining neighbors to make sure that there's no, I'm not saying we go to that level, but I do think that some more thought and maybe some more statistics need to be looked at before you tamp down some of these possible modifications to code.
Thank you. Ann Arbor, Michigan, legislation requires, and the mayor's familiar with this, because I shared with him that discussion, I recall. Ann Arbor, Michigan necessitates permission from the neighbors that have bought the property. Some other legislation I've seen will also ask three-quarters of the neighbors to give permission. My argument against that would be that if someone wants to have cats or dogs, currently we don't require, necessitate getting permission, and I think, again, that questions some of the freedoms there, that we would be, I think that, I would argue against it personally, and that's why I included with the proposal that I've shared tonight. Like I said, to me, it's similar to cats or dogs, and I'm not getting permission from the neighbors to own a cat or a dog.
Yeah. I think it might be a different situation with cats and dogs that are domestic pets, and what we're talking about is the use of chickens for something that's not, not regarding them as domestic pets, I don't think. I mean, at least the information that you're presenting to us is, you know, food sustainability, that kind of thing, so, I mean, you could argue either way.
Right.
You know, our current, I guess, I think I probably would be interested in maybe considering some kind of compromise between 10 and 100 feet. I'm a little uncomfortable with, I support the whole principle of it, but I think 10 feet is pretty close.
Some of the, some of the legislation also talks about square footage and acknowledging that if you have a small amount or certain amount of square footage, that you're limited to three chickens. If you exceed that square footage, then you bump up to five chickens, and then if you have, you know, X number of square footage, then that moves you to whatever amount you want to limit it to, 7, 9, 15. And again, my effort tonight was to keep it very simple. I think that human beings have a tendency to burden themselves with overthinking things. That would be my argument, to keep it simple. There are a while.
Well, nine points, that was pretty simple.
Thank you.
Okay, limiting of chickens, I can see that, I don't know, three or four, no roosters as a given. One thing I see in, say, Mad City Chickens, that's Madison where it's constantly, butchering is not allowed?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be one of the problems, possibly.
That you're interested in or that you would support?
My, you know, again, conceptionally, I have no problems with this. I guess I worry about adding another species that we have found controlling the cats and dogs now, depending on who you talk to, whether the cat people or dog people. And we don't have an animal control officer in place, so add another species to the mix with no mechanism to deal with, so this is a problem I'm looking at. Madison, also, if I'm reading correctly, again, MadCityChickens.com. The other one was CityChickens.com, I think it was, there's also Urban Chicken Site, which I think we've discussed this before.
Yes.
Again, Madison is 25 feet from the nearest lot line. They require registration, I believe, $10 once a year. They also have a revocation of license if there are three or more violations within a six-month period, which would control any problems, I think, but these mechanisms would have to be put in place, I think, to make it viable. Looking at the Columbus ordinance, that's 100 feet, so, you know. This one, I don't know how accurate, the chicken laws are coming from City Chicken, I don't know how accurate they are, up to date they are. Education handout, no problem, front yard, no problem. Again, I'd rather go further than 10 feet. I think 10 feet is kind of close. Registration process, I think, is necessary, and again, a violation mechanism in place, but we can't deal with it, because again, if we can't deal with it, the next door neighbor will deal with it. They'll hire a ferret or a geek or something like that, and the next thing they know, you have a headless chicken. Revisiting ordinance, no problem with that. Let's see, what else we have. I noticed one actually talks about an inspection with a health inspector. I don't know if that's necessary or not. If the violations are going to be noticeable, they'd be very noticeable, quite obviously. Again, my biggest worry is that we put something in place that is, can't be managed, gets out of control. When you talk about Key West, I've never been to Key West. I'm told the chickens haven't run in the place, and they are more of a nuisance than anything else, but I don't know, since I don't go down and I don't eat chicken. So, between those, it could be a solution right there, but at the same time, I do want to be able to address the people who don't want chickens, and see if there's a problem with having them running in their yard. So, that's pretty much where I am right now, realizing, of course, what you're talking about is a change in Title 23, which requires zoning codes, planning commission, one way or the other, discussion, possibly a public hearing, which gives voice to everybody. So, we're in for a long call down there, just so you know.
Thank you, ma'am. If you, I was hoping to clarify, if you could reiterate just a few of your concerns again. I noticed you mentioned from the Mad City, the violation process and what we're submitting.
It's just, there's a section in it. Says, okay, keeping chickens, so let me read the whole thing here, it's 9.52. I don't know, I just pulled it up there. I think it was a link from their Mad City Chicken Site, the actual law. Any person who keeps chickens in the city of Madison shall obtain an annual license prior to January 1st of each year, or within 30 days of acquiring chickens. The license commences January 1st and ends the following December 31st. Applications are made to the city treasurer, fees on license will be $10. Treasurer otherwise authorized individuals shall collect fees, shall assess collect late fees of $5 for every owner of chickens. If the owner fails to obtain license prior to April 1st of each year, or fails to obtain a license within 30 days of acquiring chickens, all late fees received and collected shall be paid to the local treasury. Wow, that's always nice. The last one after that is, the zoning minister may revoke the license if there are three or more violations within a six-month period of this or any ordinance in Chapter 23. MGO, I don't know if that means regulating chickens to keep new chickens. Probably Madison general ordinances. So, that's that. Their can synopsis here says, again, four hens, no roosters, 25 feet from nearest living quarters, which is interesting, that's not really a lot line. No butchering, that would be the other one. So, I guess, and a front setback is an issue, too, I think, that's important. So, and revisiting, of course, we'll find out.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with the data, some of the data from Madison, and in my efforts to, tonight, I was trying to find the middle ground. As I noted earlier, some of the, some of the ordinances are terribly restrictive and cumbersome, and then some of them are really, really-nilly, really, I mean, the Albuquerque, New Mexico is pretty much a free-for-all, and some other communities, it seems to be that way as well. So, I was trying to find the middle ground of some restrictions, but not making it too burdensome and cumbersome on the owners.
Paul points out, Albuquerque has a 20-foot from neighbor dwelling. On the other hand, some of these cities probably have coyotes that stop regularly, so I think there is a requirement of coyotes.
Sure, I did, I did come across.
Do you probably have some? Do I have some?
I have some, too.
I think, and we have foxes in the city limits.
I was told we have foxes, we trust the feral.
We need more foxes.
We need more foxes, though.
No, I think after that, the coyotes take out the foxes. I think it's a food chain, I'll tell you, that we're waiting to see.
And the dogs take out the coyotes.
It's just about our time.
I think having a public hearing on this matter is an excellent idea, but I'm curious, if slaughtering isn't allowed, butchering isn't allowed, and they only have about a year of egg laying, how do you get rid of them? I mean, do you have to sell them to a butcher? I mean, I'm just curious, you know, how do you dispose of them after their egg-bearing life is over?
Yeah, they don't feed the cats.
And as some of the audience is indicating, they don't totally just stop after a year, but production will dramatically drop.
Industry standards, though, we're not talking about mass production of eggs. I've had chickens for many years, and they lay, they're for pets, so I'm not going to butcher them because they're my pet.
Okay, we, okay, we, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to.
Paul, yeah, if you'd like to comment, and we're at a point, I believe, which is fair. No, I was going to say, if there's no more further comments from elected officials, city service chief director, if you don't have any more comments or thoughts, you want your comments timed.
Yes.
Oh, time to your present.
So, if members from the community do wish to offer insight or feedback or opinions on the matter, this is appropriate time, correct? And I will warn you that your comments are limited to.
Three minutes, actually, I have some.
Three, three minutes.
Name and address.
And please state your name and address, and please, do so at the podium.
This is not missive, this is your chance to show.
Hello, my name is Wilson C. Eaton, and I am a resident of the near east side. I have two hens, which I purchased two months ago, and I apologize for bringing this to your attention in this way, because it seems like you have a lot of work to do. I have a few very, very quick points.
This is being taped, you know.
Just being, oh, good. No, I prefer live. I agree with almost everything that has been said as far as what you would have to do to legislate. said as far as what you would have to do to legislate making this simple and easy. I totally agree with no roosters. I agree with four chickens. In our lot sizes, four chickens is plenty, especially mine. I live in a corner lot, which is one of the reasons why I thought I would bring up front yard chickens, because I have all front yard.
We've heard about it.
Oh, okay, we've heard about it, apparently I was.
And then, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We heard about it.
And so, any setback past 10 feet really puts a limit on where I can put my chickens. As far as manure, Chris had a great point about smelling, which I totally agree with. But one of the reasons why we got our chickens was that we move our chicken tractor, which is just basically a mobile cage, which is four by eight, by the way, which is 32 square feet. We move it around our garden and so, and then we till in the chicken manure into our garden for extra nitrogen for the food that we grow, which we see as a huge benefit. Also, I used to live in Seattle my entire life and as far as I know, I've never, well, all that I know, I've never heard any complaints about anybody having chickens as far as their rules or their setbacks, just so we have a reference somewhere else. I agree with the registration process. I think it's great because that way you have to, you know, if you, you know, three complaints, you don't get to have chickens anymore. Makes total sense. Making it a price, I understand, as long as it, you know, covers the paperwork and the necessity of having code officers or whoever to do that. But obviously, anything over $10 or anything over zero seems like it's, you know, might be a little much, but people are just trying to save a few bucks on making their own eggs. As far as one-year production, I believe that is inaccurate. I believe most bred egg-laying hens get four to five years. And my wife and I and my child are vegetarians, and so that's when you give your chicken to somebody else. And I heard you guys going into that, so I won't even get into that part. And also, in the, I counted, in the nine houses that surround my property, there are 13 dogs right now, all of which I have heard at various times of day or night, and two chickens, none of which I've ever heard complaints about from my neighbors whom I feel to have, you know, a decent communication, you know. So, good enough. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
What comments?
Thank you.
Well, I'm Paul Tomko, I live on the Near East Side also. And we'll kind of hit on what I was going to say about the lifespan. I was going to second then that my chickens are pets, so I wouldn't butcher them after a year. And even if they stop laying, I'd want to just keep them around because, as anyone would their dog or cat. Another thing I wanted to say is, on the manure issue, is chickens are at most six, seven pounds. Six, seven pound animal does not produce that much manure. So I just think that'd be really a non-issue. I have, we have four chickens and neighbors, I've asked neighbors, surveyed them on if they care, the noise, the manure, and everyone says they don't smell or hear anything. Most people say when they do hear them, they enjoy it, because it just reminds them of when they were a kid or something like that, people have said. Another issue I heard brought up was the enforcement and maybe chickens running afoul. I think some that would prevent that is they're not breeding, because there's no rooster. So it's not going to have a chicken population problem, because it's limited to the amount of chickens you buy, the amount of chickens you have. And another point I wanted to bring up is I'm a nurse in the ER and we've seen hundreds of dog bites. I have yet to see chicken-related injury in the emergency room. So as far as a public health problem in that standpoint, it doesn't seem like it, there's going to be a problem.
I'm Krista Duval, I also live on the Near East Side. And I also think of chickens as a pet and they happen to lay eggs as well. And unlike dogs, chickens don't get into the neighbor's trash and ransack the trash when it's out. They don't bark throughout the night. They don't chase my neighbors down the road on their bicycles. They create far less poop. Our chickens weigh about three pounds, so far less than any of our neighbor's dogs or the Great Dane across the street. And also, you know, I'm a family practice doctor and the Athens Health Department reported 120 dog bites last year, 50% of which required emergency room treatment, and also cat bites, which required inpatient hospitalization. So, and the other issue is, you know, compared to OU fests, I think that the OU fests create far more waste and noise, arguably smell. And again, having, like, from a public health standpoint, it's a far bigger problem, the number of people that we see come in during the fest weekends when we have to call in extra physicians and nurses all of the weekends, from like the end of May through when everyone leaves at graduation. So, again, I think we tolerate that and chickens would be far less a nuisance.
Are you suggesting chicken tractors for the students?
I'm Marion McClure, I'm a, here as a resident. And as a potential future chicken owner, I don't have any yet. I would like to own some. I've planned with my neighbors who've already looked into the movable chicken cage coop, and I think it's a great move towards food security and sustainability. So I hope you all look at it a little more. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary.
Hi, my name is Charlie Cap and I'm, I just moved back to Athens. I lived here back in the late 80s, early 90s. I've kind of been coming back and forth and now, you know, I've settled on Athens as my home. And I don't own chickens and I don't plan on ever owning chickens. Just not my idea of a pet unless they can chase a ball or catch a frisbee. But, so from a perspective of someone that, you know, is not interested in owning chickens, I fully support legislation that allows people to have chickens. In my view, it's a, you know, it's a basic property right. Unless, you know, it's a nuisance or neighbors have a good reason against it, just a few phone calls, you know, to the mayor is not enough to take away a property right. You know, people often complain about things they're unfamiliar with or they don't have any knowledge of. And again, there has to be a better reason for banning, you know, a basic property right. Another point I wanted to make is, yeah, I mean, I think there should be, you know, legislated minimum requirements for being able to have chickens, because what you don't want is, you know, college students to get the idea, oh, this is great, you know, we can have chickens. And, I mean, that's, I don't want to knock on college students, but, you know, I mean, you see, you know, at the end of the school year, there's always in the paper, you know, kittens are being given away, dogs are being given away, they're just not, you know, they're not that sort of, they don't think ahead about what the problems are with having chickens. And they probably don't even have the living situation to have chickens. So I don't know whether it's a, you know, you need to own your own property or have a yard or, you know, it should definitely, I mean, if you look at a common lease, it probably doesn't even address whether, you know, renters can have chickens. So, I mean, that's, that could be a problem, just having, you know, college students bring chickens, you know, into their home. And then who knows what happens when college students are drunk and they've got 10 chickens in the backyard. I mean, I can't even imagine. But as far as the registration goes, you know, I think it makes sense, but I'm against just using, you know, a registration fee as just a revenue generating source for the town. If you're going to charge $10, it should go towards either code enforcement, dealing with the chickens, something related to having chickens. I mean, it's not, you know, the people that are having chickens, really, I mean, they shouldn't be taxed, you know, to provide a revenue stream for the town. That doesn't make any sense to me. And then lastly, I think that is a good point as far as how you get rid of the chickens. Once they're, you know, I mean, let's face it, I mean, some people consider chickens, okay, well, chickens to some people are pets, to other people, they're just going to be eggs and then they're going to want to get rid of the chickens. But that should be addressed, absolutely. You shouldn't just throw the chickens out in the trash. Or to be recycled, I don't know. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Good evening, Leslie Schaller, 4641 Angel Ridge Road, non-city resident. I guess the hat I'm wearing this evening is as the chair of the Community Food Initiatives Board. I come directly from the CFI board meeting this evening. And as a board of directors, we don't really have a position formulated at this point in time, one way or the other. But I think what our interests are, certainly, you know, we applaud Councilmember Butler to really promote the local food movement and food security for Athens city residents. And I think our role in terms of our long-term partnership with the city of Athens can be an education one. So depending on how this transpires, what sort of chicken ordinance we end up with in the city of Athens, I would just like to recommend that CFI can probably play a role in terms of educating residents who either are currently raising chickens or aspire to raise chickens very young. And, you know, we would look forward to figuring out what role we can play. In the meantime, we're just going to continue to monitor the dialogue.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Natalie Cruz. I live in the Wild Love West. We have three girls, Oprah Wingfe, Eleanor Rustavel, and Margaret Hatcher. And they were actually recently, we recently moved them out to our family farm out in Athens County. But before we got them, we discussed with all of our neighbors, the kids in the neighborhood loved them. They came over and fed them clover and things like that. Most of our, most of our neighbors actually asked us for our chicken manure for their gardens, things like that. We ended up moving them for a bit more space and because a developer asked us to. And so that's a totally different story. But one of the things, the comment that I actually want to make is that, is that when we're thinking about this setback from the property line, one of the things that, you know, you notice in parts of both the east and the west side is that if you go beyond 10 or 20 feet, you're going to say, you're going to basically say that a lot of people can't have them because of the size of their lots. And that's kind of my main, my main point is about the lot size.
Thank you, Dr. Cruz.
My name's Anna Abetti-Corpi. I am the notorious chicken owner on Second Street. Seen my chickens in the road, in the front yard, and which, for which I want to apologize, and I feel like it might have, you know, done damage to future or wannabe chicken owners, because, you know, admittedly, we were irresponsible in the beginning, didn't know necessarily what we were getting into, and didn't think it would be a problem until the code officer actually picked them up from the road and brought them in the backyard. So, you know, we've learned a lot. We got our chickens over three years ago. I was vehemently against it. My husband wanted them, and so I finally acquiesced. And, you know, they've, to add a point to Kent's legislation, I do believe in the pet aspect of it. I mean, I didn't want chickens and they've really become, you know, part of our family, just like my cats. And it's not really about the economic value, because we can't buy $2 eggs at the farmer's market, but it's the value of working for your food. And the fact that I have to get up in the morning, you know, my alarm clock is my chicken laying an egg, and have to go bring them out and feed them and taking care of something has been a very, it's been an amazing value that I've, I've learned to appreciate. We had our third visit by the code officer, maybe fourth, last week or two weeks ago. So tomorrow night, a woman's coming to take our chickens, because I don't want to get it in staminar, I don't want to get a citation. So I just want you to know, we will be compliant. But I wanted to make two more points. The education factor isn't just for homeschooled kids. I believe it's an educational factor for adults and for children who do go to school. And it's just amazing, even my friends at work, talking to them about the chickens and how much they learn from my conversation about them. And of course, the fact that I'm a teacher still shocks me. And two issues that I think, I know I'm concerned about in a public hearing setting is, A, the noise. Chickens lay every morning. And by the way, we've had our chicken's first egg August 1st, 2007. So three years and still strong. We get, you know, an egg per chicken every day, except for in the winter. They do lay and they make a piercing, you know, it's not rooster-esque, but it's, you know, 50% of a rooster noise. And it is a noise that happens on the clock every morning. So if it's a nuisance, and it's a routine nuisance, like, I don't guess that's something we have to think about, because you can't stop that when they lay and they make that noise. At least I don't believe we can. Maybe someone could correct me. But, so that's something that I think has to be addressed when we discuss the legislation. And lastly, just the culture. Like, I've heard a lot of the complaints based on, we're not in a farm, you know, we're in a residential suburban, or, I don't know suburbia, but, you know, nice townhouses with our gardens and our mowed grass. And so I think there's a cultural issue that we're going to fight in a public hearing setting, that people will feel like this is akin to farmland and barnyards. And I don't know how we fight that, or necessarily fight isn't a positive word, but how we address that. So it's just something to think about as we move into a public hearing phase, if that goes there. Thanks.
Is there more dangerous than chickens?
Hi, I'm Jake Householder. I'm a resident in town, a largely college student populated section of town. And I wanted to say, just from a follow-up, I guess, for something that Anna brought up, about our sort of cultural standpoint of maybe our mowed lawns and our nice gardens and that sort of stuff. And I just want to say that for us, chickens are part of a long-term sustainability and lot improvement program. In that, when we moved into our house, our backyard was largely just covered in weeds and overgrown, you know, not, it wasn't a pleasant lawn. So, part of a, part of what having chickens is for us is subscribing to what's called management intensive rotational grazing, which does involve moving the chicken tractor around in such a way that as the chickens trod on the lot, they actually can help improve the soil and also clear some space so that we can replant grass seed in a really efficient way for us. So, I guess I just wanted to add that it's not as though we're looking at introducing a bunch of crazy farm, like, values into a semi-urban setting, in so much as I feel like there's a way to blend the two and to use the knowledge from one area to better our area. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you on that comment as well, too. Reminds me of an article I read in a journal which addressed some of the benefits of chicken ownership, which would include that they eat ticks and other insects that may be less desirable in your property. Any other comments? Okay, well, oh, yes, okay, super.
Hi, I'm Laura Householder. I'm a resident. Kind of adding on to what Jake said, the fact that it can improve a lawn might be a factor in how much space, you know, you put on the property line, because that would affect people that are doing rotational grazing. Somebody talked about small lawns and if you, chicken tractors are made to move around and if you don't move them around, then you're going to just wear down that spot in the lawn and it wouldn't be as attractive as being able to move it around. And a second point I wanted to make, someone mentioned, you know, that we don't have an animal control officer and they didn't want chickens just running around, and that we already have dogs and cats running around. And if you want to keep your chickens alive, you can't let them run around because of the dogs and cats that are already running around in Athens. And I think people that haven't confined their chickens as well have run into this problem. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. I did one in some legislation, I think, in Missouri, that acknowledged that very instance that if dogs or cats that do happen to kill chickens, they would not be considered dangerous or aggressive animals for that particular offense alone. considered dangerous or aggressive animals for that particular offense alone. So that was some of the legislation that addressed that particular issue so you wouldn't experience the added burden there.
In your own yard?
Marijuana.
Realize you're not supposed to have a dog loose anyway. So that'd be a violation, so.
Correct.
For some dog gets in some place that's killing things, it's obviously off the leash.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everyone on council and members of the public and mayor's office that have been, you know, going off with their ideas and thoughts and support here and, uh, concerns. Merewell?
Okay, so the process is that you need to recommend it to the planning commission. Um, I don't know if it comes to the, the level of a public hearing that's required for the planning commission. They vote on it up and down, comes back to you guys for a vote. I suspect you'd want a public hearing. Um, I suspect, uh, if you've seen this type of stuff before, it'll, there'll be ebbs and flows of pro and con. Chicken tractor are living in the town. Realize, of course, as a stance now, you are allowed to have chickens, you just have to have a very, very big lot. And that's really where we are right now. So, and I know most people don't have a lot that will, you know, that you can stand in any one particular place until you're 100 feet from the lot line. In fact, the majority of people don't have that. So that's one thing. Again, the process wise, it has, uh, if I remember correctly, it is in Title 23, so therefore it has to go through the planning commission.
Thank you. Yeah, and that's, I was hoping to check in with the law director this evening. Because my concern about the way the code is written currently would be acknowledging that if you have an accessory structure, you need that 100 feet.
Well, accessory structure is technically like a shed, really, how many has to be? Five? No. Five, five feet on the set, uh, setback. It's a five-foot setback. Your house has to be at least a 10-foot setback. So an accessory structure like a shed actually can be close, fairly close. Again, looking at this, and I, I don't know how up to date all this stuff is from the city chicken site. It's, um, it's a state-by-state synopsis of many cities, pro and con, um, and probably out of date. Because I imagine there, it looks like they have more fundraising chickens than anything else. That a lot of them are further away than 10 feet. So that's one thing you have to think about where, uh, and I say, I suspect the next, you know, if this comes up for three readings, we'll have back and forth on all pro and con and as it goes in the way to put this, uh, how this should work. Uh, I'm not a big, uh, I do eat eggs, I'm not a big chicken fan. At the same time, I recognize the fact that it's a good idea. I'm willing to see how this works along the way. Again, my biggest concern is we don't have a method right now for dealing with some of the annual issues we have right now. And that's my concern. So I want to make sure this gets, um, put in some kind of mechanism that we, we don't have more problems than we start.
Sure. It's fair.
Yeah. And a $10 registration fee, I think, is, it would be just so we have a lot of the chickens that are, and again, if we're going to have a violation mechanism in place, that would have to be part of it, too. Code would be called for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. At least from my view.
Not, not to second guess the mayor, but I was just thinking that maybe a structure is a, is a building, a permanent building founded, grounded in, I don't think that the tractors are structures. I mean, they move around.
That's what I was alluding to.
Yeah. So, I mean, somebody's going to have to come to grips with that if we go forward.
Yes. We, we can get a definition, probably, chicken are, chicken tractor. Uh, realize you, when you start talking about things like trailers, trailers have licenses on it. So is it a road vehicle, worthy vehicle or not? Is it a movable structure? We've had people complain about piles of lumber outside of the house.
Yeah. I'm familiar with that, yes.
Yes, so is that, that's a movable structure. It is not really useful, but at the same time, there's a...
I was thinking more like an analogy to a wheelbarrow. It's more like a wheelbarrow.
I, I'm sure that somebody's going to complain about wheelbarrows, too.
Well, yes. Depends on your, um, aesthetic, I guess.
So moving forward, um, do we need to request, formally request this, this, to the planning commission or...
I, I think it depends on, I mean, in order to change the, um, the 23 of 4, you would have to, but in order to make a whole separate chicken ordinance, um, where, I mean, if you have a dog ordinance, that doesn't go through the planning commission.
I think that's Title 9, I think.
Right. So where did the, you know, so that's a, if we make a standalone chicken ordinance, then wouldn't it have to go through the planning commission?
But the standalone chicken, you still require 100-foot setback for a lot, for an area. Then you talk about trying to get a definition.
Well, no, if you had a, um, structure, but if it, if you didn't have an accessory structure. I mean, I'm just wondering, um, where we go, if there's two different processes of fixing this and whether that would do it all, or it sounds like we need to fix this and do a, um, chicken ordinance with the nine or 10 points.
Hmm, I don't know. Let me think about it.
So that's...
Is a tent accessory structure? Is a TP accessory structure? Is a York accessory structure? We have all of them in the west side, so.
Right.
Long periods of time.
Right. But I mean, the, so we'd have to come up with a definition and see where it goes.
My neighborhood.
So, I mean, I think that anything we have to do, well, there'll be a public hearing at some point, but, so.
Could you go and discuss with the planning commission potentially the issue of structure? Because I think it needs to, I think we probably need to do both of them, myself, I feel.
I mean, I think we need a chicken ordinance itself.
But we also, I think, need to deal with the zoning.
Right. So, the weather, chicken ordinance, where that would go, which part of the zoning, whether it would go in the zoning code or other sections of the code.
So you're going to the planning commission?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll request to be on the agenda for the planning commission. Mayor, is that something? I'll request to be on the agenda for the planning commission to...
Okay. Sounds like, yeah. Don't be shocked.
And get some pictures of tractors. Do you think that would practice?
Thank you.
Remember, do you have miscellaneous?
I have miscellaneous.
I do not, thank you.
I have miscellaneous.
Other miscellaneous?
I have miscellaneous, I have two quick miscellaneous for the planning and development committee. Um, they're both, um, they're exciting, um, exciting, you guys can all get up and walk out now. Um, right-ofways, the granting of revocable license for city right-ofways. Um, there's two that are in the process right now. One is the last city right-ofway revocable license on Riverside Drive. Um, this one's granting a revocable license to Ohio University. Um, and this is for using part of the city right-ofway for parking. Um, and it's a renewal. Um, and renewals are done every 10 years. Uh, and now, and also another is a renewal for revocable license, the corner of East, East State Street and Stimson, which is that retaining wall that has the mural on it. Um, and this application has been put in by Rural Action. And whether, I'm not sure what the plan is for them, but if they have, if they want to redo the mural or keep it up, I'm not sure. They just want to renew, but, um...
Five, 10 years.
Right. But there's a process if they want to do other things with mural itself.
Uh, yes, I would, you're talking about maintaining it, they're supposed to do that if they're changing it, they need to talk with the municipal...
Right. So this is just the renewal for the city right-ofway.
Do we, I saw that. Do we know, did Rural Action request that or did we ask that of Rural Action?
Well, it's a, it's an application that they put in. So maybe somebody reminded them that it needed to be renewed.
And, but we have contacted them about some maintenance on that mural and it hasn't been done, so.
Right.
I'd like to take this moment to, um, to talk about maintenance. I don't mean among us, but talk to Rural Action, yeah.
Nudge them along. Okay. Um, in the, in the packet that I got, it has the memorandum.
Yeah, so.
So, okay.
We have copies of them.
Yeah. That's all I have for miscellaneous.
Okay. Shall we move on? Governor, while we...
No, thank you, I'm on my way.
Transportation Committee has miscellaneous issues.
Three short items. Uh, number one, the roundabout at the intersection of Route 682 and Richland Avenue is progressing and there is a new video that city staff has produced. And so that's just alerting citizens to watch for those videos and educational information as the, as we near completion, um, that, uh, the improvements to intersection.
Mayor, did you have any information about, about the finishing touches? There was a little article in the paper about when traffic would...
Uh, as far as I know, I think by the end of the week, they're supposed to be going on to phase three, which means the south leg of Richland's supposed to be open. I was brought up a staff meeting earlier today. I think the other thing is just trying to get the logistics for the artwork in place before that happens. It's because it will, the way it's going to be structured, I think, you're going to have three parts of that, you'll be able to go around three parts of the roundabout. But as I said, the west part of 682 will still be closed for a while. And I, they, I think they said by the end of the week, that at least after the staff meeting, of course, could be conditional on the weather, but I think they will, unless you know something different.
No, haven't heard any other updates on it, as of yet.
There's a new video.
Yep. Second item is just to alert folks that we have received at least the preliminary approval for the Appalachian Regional Commission grant for the, uh, access road project for Circle Drive. We don't have a formal award notification yet, to the best of my knowledge, but, um, we do have, um, an email from the official from the department. So that goes from the Federal Highway Administration, Ohio Division, to the Ohio Department of Transportation. So when we get that award notice, we'll be able to move forward with that. Third item is an alert to council that we will, um, with approval of the council, be moving towards an ordinance in July. And this will be for the beginnings of work to the old Richland Avenue Bridge over the Oxbow. So that's how I'm going to try and refer to it each time so we don't confuse it with a new Richland Avenue Bridge that's near the roundabout. Um, and those of us, well, and we've heard from Department of Public Works Director Andy Stone that this is a bridge that's in, in need of repair. And this first phase is to begin in 2010. The money is in the 2010 appropriation, or it's been appropriated in the budget already. Uh, but what this ordinance will do is move us forward so we can start the, um, work by October for preliminary engineering, for the environmental clearance and the right-ofway clearance for the project. So that'll be the first, the first beginning stages of it. Merewell?
So this is really for design and engineering for this year?
Correct.
Okay. And I've been referring to it as the Oxbow Bridge these days just because there's too many Richland Avenue bridges.
Yeah, well, that might be, we could just call it the Oxbow Bridge. That might be clearer, yeah, than the Richland Avenue Bridge. Um, and this is part of a larger, uh, project. I think the total cost for the project long-term is about 2.5 million. We will have, for which we will have a grant. There will be the usual 80/20 mix where 20% of the cost share will be needed to be provided by the city. And we can meet that cost share requirement. We could possibly, um, with the expenses for the Carriage Hill Bridge repair, if we complete that before 2012, the costs that we put towards Carriage Hill Bridge repairs could meet the cost share for this Oxbow Bridge. Counselor McAbbin?
So the cost to us of this bridge repair would be roughly, if the bids come in, 500,000 for our share plus the cost of the engineering, 200,000, so 700,000 is the cost that we will be looking at if things go the way we want them to go.
Correct.
Okay. It's a lot of money.
It's a big gift, too.
It's a big one.
Big gift, yes.
And this is one of the ones that's been cited, I think, for several years, that it is, and it's in poor repair and very much in need of, of maintenance.
Yeah, it's got 1933, I believe. It needs some, I think the actual verticals are good, last time I talked to Andy and what the, the actual base is coming back. Um, and again, I think he put it on the list for ODOT at least two years ago, just so it's, it's in the queue.
Counselor McAbbin, did that answer your questions about the bridge?
For the south side, I assume.
And that's all the items that I have.
Okay. We're going to adjourn. Um, we will have a regular session of council, um, next Monday and the month of August. Everybody needs to remember that council has generally taken the month of August off. So, we'll see what, what is in the offing, but we're adjourned tonight.